Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I invite everyone, please rise and join us in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, and equal all of the liberties and justice for all. Kathy, would you call the vote, please?
Jim Dammert?
Here.
Steve Nelson?
Here.
James Shiloh?
Here.
Julie Davis?
Here.
Jeff Jacobson?
Here, but not the one.
Present.
Chris Ren?
Here.
Forbes, present.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed? Move? Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Shiloh?
Yes.
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 Yes. Ren?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes. Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board on any issue?
Yeah.
You can come forward in a little bit and state your name and address. And you have three hits.
My name is Lawrence Schuster. I live in 973 B Compton Lane. I have no grandchildren or children here. Why I am here, the reason I'm here, is federal government is starting to send out a bunch of obnoxious, stupid, and ridiculous mandates from the school system. And also, I hope to God that none of you, this board, does not start teaching this to our children, because some of them will tell the students that they're white and they're inferior. And that all minorities are better than them. I also ran across a gal that's going to college, who wants to be a teacher. And I found out talking to her, the only curse that the state of Illinois requires is that they have taken an educational class of how to teach people or students. They don't ask them if they're, they don't take tests to see how competent they are in English, science, or math. Now, this is assin-. I also read a school book, not this school board, I ran across something that was online, and there was three schools in the district. And two out of the three passed their state's requirements. The third one didn't, they didn't say whether they passed or not, they just started saying that they had more blacks, more Mexicans, more foreign students, minorities, in their school than the other two did. So they didn't have to report the information. If that's the case, and I, that the educational system is saying that the blacks, the Mexicans, whoever has, if they're not white, they aren't expected to learn, be as good as students, as a white student. I don't understand this philosophy that is being spread throughout the United States. A number of years ago, I got a copy of, I don't know, all the test results for the city of Sycamore School District, the high school stats. And every year, well, I think it was six years, every year, the report of how the students were doing differed every year. They started off with about six pages, then it went to seven pages, then eight pages, then nine pages. But the report, you couldn't line up one page to another. I worked six months trying to figure out how in the name of God, anybody can decide how to teach students, or how well their students are doing. If you can't compare what, on a simple list, how well they were doing this year versus last year. I mean, I could tell you a story of a kid that I went to school with, kid graduated to high school. He lived across the street. And when I was in high school, they had IQ tests. This guy had an IQ of ninety, which is according to the professionals at that time. He was an idiot. I know he went to high school, and he was barely graduating with Ds, D pluses, and C minors. But he went on to college. And he got Bs and Cs in college. Then he went on for his masters. And he became manager or director of a hospital in Pennsylvania. And if you people use the same standard today, that guy would never have had a chance to get an education and do as well as he did. I myself, I went to school, I can't read beyond the fourth grade level. And right now, nine out of ten males that you have in your school system have the same problem I have. Or one out of ten, I'm sorry. And one out of a hundred girls had the problem. It follows the genetics of the male. I had two sons out of three that had this problem. One was able to count it. But we caught it when he was thirty years old. The other one, we didn't catch it until he was about six thirty. And when I got caught that, when we found out about it, found out the only person, at that time, he was going to school, this would be about forty years, forty-five years ago, there's only ten people in the whole United States know anything about this problem. And it was a case of the two eyes don't work together. I could be reading and after about five, six minutes, one left eye with a right eye in distal, right right out of the space. It'll take me another two minutes to figure out where the hell I was reading.
Mr. Schuster, I'm sorry to cut you off at this point, but your time, your time is up.
Well, I just, I hope in the name of God, the two people who are held to hope for the future of these children, and they got screwed up the last two years, year and a half. And it appears if the federal government has a way, they get screwed up for another half year. They just stand up on your high legs and say, no, do what's right, give the schools back to the school. And I suggest one other thing, possibly offering scholarships to all the students so they can go to the school of their choice.
Thank you. Well, we'll take your comments under consideration. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board this evening? We'll move on to the next item then of the agenda, which is communications, correspondence, informational, letters and newsletters. We did receive a proclamation from the city of Sycamore, and I'll read it into the record. This is a proclamation declaring May first through May thirty-first as Sycamore senior graduating class of 2021 month. The month of May 2021 has been designated as Sycamore senior graduating class of 2021 month, to honor senior students who will be graduating from high school in the month of May. And whereas the class of 2021, which consists of two hundred and seventy-two students, has endured many hardships and have foregone a traditional senior year, including sports, field trips, theatrical performances, concerts, club activities, prom. And whereas the class of 2021 has worked hard to graduate despite the challenges of completing school virtually. And whereas the class of 2021 have overcome these disappointments and more on their way to commencement, and have demonstrated their commitment to education and their faith in the future. And whereas it is important to recognize the hardships as well as the many achievements of the students of the class of 2021, therefore be it resolved that I, Kurt Lang, mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Sycamore senior graduating class of 2021. And encourage residents and businesses alike to recognize the positive impact these young men and women have in our community, and the bright futures they have ahead of them. Go Spartans! And it's signed by Mayor Lang and dated April twenty-first, 2021. Thank the city for that proclamation, and we have to remember to celebrate May as the month of the graduating class of 2021. Any other, that's a tough one to beat, I guess. Any other comments about communications and correspondence, letters, newsletters? FOIA requests, there were none? There was a suspension report? Things are heating up at the middle school? Committee reports?
You saw probably in the other attachments that if you do have an item that you'd like to have considered for resolution, they're due June twenty-third, so we as a board have to talk about that sometime in the month of May to be able to meet that deadline. But if there's any issue you feel that our association should be advocating for or lobbying for, then let me know, I want to help you put the resolution together for board review.
Yes, let us know so we can get it on the agenda. I did have the opportunity actually today to attend Kane County Bar Association seminar on student discipline, which is really rather unusual for them to have a school-related topic like that for continuing education. But it was very well done and very interesting. I think that for the most part, we were exactly where we needed to be in accordance with what they were describing in the seminar. There are some new laws that'll be coming down that we're gonna probably have to wrestle with in terms of implementing, but as in the past, I'm sure we'll do that and we'll do that properly when the time comes. Great way to spend a bunch of hours. Any other committee reports? Canvas of election results. Everybody get a chance to look at the election results? So at this point in time, we need a motion to approve the canvass of votes conducted by the county clerks of DeKalb and Kane Counties and the declaration of winners. Moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Motion carries. At this point, we're getting ready to adjourn as a, as a board and then reorganize. Before we adjourn though, we will need to appoint a president pro tem. And I would nominate the superintendent to act in that role. Is there anyone else who have a nomination for president pro tem? While there are no other nominations, I'll declare you president pro tem. We also need a secretary pro tem. And so I would propose Kathy Slonker for that role. Any other nominations for secretary pro tem? Well, then I would declare that Kathy Slonker is appointed as secretary pro tem. At this point in time, I'm gonna call for a motion to adjourn Sini Dadi, which means that we're adjourning in this configuration, not to return in this configuration, so. Is there anyone who would like to make the motion to adjourn Sini Dadi? So moved. Do we, do we need a roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. President Pro Tem, it's all yours. Well, this is new, uncharted territory for me, so I'll do my best in this short-lived, hopefully, time is, is up for him. So I'd like to call the, this meeting of the Sycamore CUSD 427 Board of Education to order. Kathy, would you please roll?
Do we need to get Mike and Sini?
So Mr. Jacobson, don't go too far.
You have to catch me, Steve.
I don't have my running shoes on, so you'll have to slow down for me.
Okay. Jim Dammert?
Here.
Steve Nelson?
Here.
James Shiloh?
Here.
Julie Davis?
Here.
Michael LaVita?
Here.
Eric Jones?
Present.
Chris Ren? Here. Forbes, present.
All right, this time I'd like to pay the, the new board in taking the oath of office. I'll read section by section and then allow everybody an opportunity to repeat it, take the deal with yourself. I'd like to keep with tradition, so I don't know if we've done the seated or stand and raise your hand. That's what I would prefer to do. So I'd ask all board members that are newly elected, to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and then state your name, do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Sycamore Community Unit School District 427, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, to the best of my ability.
I, Jim Jacobson, do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Sycamore Community Unit School District Number 427, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, to the best of my ability.
I further affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I further affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall encourage and respect free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Sycamore Community Unit School District Number 427.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Sycamore Community Unit School District Number 427.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall strive to ensure continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for Sycamore Community Unit School District Number 427.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for Sycamore Community Unit School District Number 427.
And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision for Sycamore Community Unit, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Thank you. Way more than our company, anyone that's ever had. And with that, that takes us to the election of officers. So I would seek first a nomination for the office of president.
I would nominate Jim Dammert.
Under any other nominations for the office of president of the school board? Hearing none. It is my pleasure to recognize Mr. Dammert as the president of this Board of Education for Sycamore School District.
Thank you.
Do I keep going, or do you take over here? That's a good question. In the past, I've taken, usually once the president's elected, I take over. That's completely fine. So nominations are now in order for the office of vice president?
I nominate Stephen.
Are there any other nominations? Steve Nelson, being the only candidate nominated for the office of vice president, the chair hereby declares you elected by acclamation and directs the secretary to so record in minutes. Thank you. At this point in time, nominations are now in order for the office of secretary. Nominate first, Ron. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no further nominations, the nominations for office of secretary are closed. And Chris Ren, being the only candidate nominated for the office of secretary, the chair hereby declares you elected by acclamation and directs the secretary pro tem to so record in minutes.
Thank you.
And I think that puts us into, back into the regular agenda. At this point, I would ask Kathy to, well, we'll call the meeting to order, and then I would ask you to call the vote.
Jim Dammert?
Here.
Steve Nelson?
Here.
James Shiloh?
Here.
Julie Davis?
Here.
Michael LaVita?
Here.
Eric Jones?
Present.
Chris Ren?
Okay. One of the first orders of business for us is to establish the regular meeting dates for the board. And a proposal has been in our packets, and hopefully everybody's had a chance to review that, see that several of the meetings are set to take place at different locations, and I'm sure that will all be tempered by whatever happens in the future with COVID regulations. But at least at this point, we can set out our intent to travel to other buildings and resume our, our previous meeting custom of going out to buildings from time to time. So is there a motion to approve the regular meeting dates and places as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded? All in favor, say aye. Closed? Motion carries. At this point in time, we'd like to roast, I mean, we'd like to, our retiring board member, Jeff Jacobson. And Jeff, if you would come forward.
I've had the pleasure of serving with you now for eight years, in two different segments broken up, and really have appreciated the abilities that you've brought to the board, the passion that you've brought to the board, the hard work ethic that you've brought to the board, your incredible knowledge of real estate, values of properties within the district, what is going on within the district in terms of building out and zoning, and future predictions about how that might affect attendance in schools. And it's always been a pleasure to serve with you. I would invite any of your fellow members to also make some comments at this point in time. Anyone would like to?
I think I have to make some comments. So it was probably about nine years ago that Jeff encouraged me to run for the board, and I can honestly say that without his guidance, I would not have gone down this endeavor. And while I appreciate working with everybody that I've gotten to spend the last eight years on the board with, I will be sad to see my favorite board member, longtime friend, step down. So Jeff, thank you for all of your service, all of your guidance, and encourage, been along the way, and I believe the school district is better placed with your contributions, as well as my own life, so.
Thank you very much. I was sad to see you go the first time, glad you came back, and sad to see you go again, you've always been a great person to work with, and always had great insights.
And so now we won't be able to confuse you with Eric.
Our kids have confused us, our superintendents have confused us.
It's been amazing thing. But Jeff, we really appreciate the service that you've, you've done for the community, for the board, and for all the students who've been here and who have benefited from, from your efforts. We wish you the best of luck in the future, we'll miss you, we're sad to see you go. And I would like to present you with this plaque, which hardly seems adequate to really honor you, I'm serious, because of the quality and the amount of service that you provided. It does say, "In recognition of unselfish service to the Sycamore Community Unit School District Number 427, the Board of Education presents this award of merit to Jeff Jacobson."
Thank you very much, Joe, I appreciate it.
Yeah, if you can say a few words if you'd like, to get us back.
Well, thank you very much, this has been a, a hard-earned plaque, especially over the past year. It's been a great honor to serve the Sycamore community a total of eight years, and especially the past year, it's been quite honestly one of the greatest honors of my life. A challenge that I could have never imagined, and a challenge I truly tried to step up and, and could be part of a solution. We as a board try to do our very best to serve our community. And sometimes our decisions weren't always popular, but we, we thought as a board it was the right decision to be made at the time. And I also would like to thank my wife, countless, countless hours of attending meetings and returning emails and phone calls, discussions. Meanwhile, while she's sitting home watching, probably something like, I don't know, you name it. So, so, and, you know, being with my own kids, it's, it's been challenging, but definitely worth it, and, and great to invest in our community. I stepped down because my kids have since left the district, and I think as a board member, it's really important to have some type of connection with the district, one way or another. And I suddenly found myself in the past few years, especially the past year, trying to connect with neighbors, which I don't mind doing, but you kind of lose that perspective as I felt like it was time for somebody else to, to take that seat. But I'm really proud of what we were able to do, being a fiscal conservative on board, I felt like we did great things, and Nicole was a big part of that, so I thank you for that. Balanced budget, we finally got to say goodbye to tax anticipation warrants, I'm really happy about that. And if for some odd reason we go down a rabbit hole again, Nicole, I'm warning you, I'll be back. So at any rate, thank you all again, it's been a real pleasure, and go Spartans.
Well, let's just watch him fade away. Next item then is superintendent's report. The only item under this- The only item under this superintendent's report tonight is just a return to learn update. There are two main topics that I'd like to cover, but before we get there. Just to remind the board and as well as our community, our mission, empowering all learners to succeed in the world. Our vision is to provide an ideal learning experience where students and staff are engaged and won't come back the next day. Our core values, honesty, trustworthiness, integrity, quality, empathy, respect, citizenship, digital citizenship, responsibility, and collaboration. Five questions our professional learning communities ask and discuss. What do we want students to know and learn? What do students want to know and learn? How do we know if they have learned it? What will we do if they don't learn it? And what can we do if they already know it? So in terms of a return to learn update, obviously, if you've kept up with what's been going on in schools for the last couple of weeks, really, quarantining of students has been a major topic. We were excited to welcome students back four days a week on April 6th. And in many respects, that's gone very well, and I'll touch on that here in a little bit more detail in a couple of slides. But unfortunately, positive cases have increased, and that leads to unavoidable quarantines. One of the questions we've gotten in the last couple of weeks is, the IDPH has decreased the distance for social distancing from six to three feet, but we're still quarantining students. And unfortunately, they did not change the definition of the close contact from six to three feet. It's still six feet, with or without a mask, for a total of 15 minutes over a 24-hour period. So if you come in and out of contact with an individual who's positive, and it's five minutes, and then it's two minutes, but then it's 10 minutes, that's an accumulation in one day. So that student or that individual could be a staff member as well, identified as a close contact. We follow the most current IDPH exclusion protocol. David promised me that if I put down this link, it would work. The board has seen this. I just want to scroll through it. I'm not going to go in through it in any detail. But just by skimming it, you can tell how complicated the decision tree is for making decisions about whether or not students are quarantined or still for how long. It has been updated. There are students that are receiving the vaccination, so that's taken into account. And still, what you see is a very complex chart, a decision chart in terms of making those decisions. We continue to follow that exclusion protocol when making decisions. Then we work very closely with the county health department. We've done that from the very beginning. They are up to date as the exclusion tree changes, and they give us advice as needed. I will say, and I want to apologize to some of the members of our community, because communication lately regarding COVID quarantines has been a little delayed. It's not going on as fast as we would like. That's not a function of the effort, the individuals who are involved in investigating close contacts and quarantine. Truly is a function of just the load of work that has come over the last couple of weeks, and we're doing our best to stay up to date. There's only so many hours in the day you have to prioritize communication. So we've done very well up to this point, but there have been some cases where communication has been delayed longer than we'd like. We always prefer to make a phone call, but again, factors lately have been beyond our control, and not a lot of us could do that. Email notifications are always sent out as soon as possible, and there are a series of email communications. So they go to impacted individuals first, or their families. Then they may go out to other families in classrooms, say, an elementary classroom. They go out to the staff within the school, go out to the general community. There are several email communications that go out. We get those out as quickly as we possibly can, and then we respond to phone calls and emails as soon as we possibly can. In most situations, these cases come up during the day. So we get a phone call at the beginning of the day. Our head nurse Cory Maugn and our team, which includes Mr. Ryan, investigates close contacts, then they make decisions during the day, and they can make those phone calls during the day. There are occasions where the positive report comes in late in the day, or overnight, or over the weekend, which, as you can imagine, really can complicate the communication process. Still, we try to get the communication as fast as we possibly can. Sometimes we hear a rumor of a positive case that we can't investigate till the next day or the following week if that comes in. So communication's been challenging. We apologize for that. We're taking steps to improve that. We're getting that out as fast as we can. Just some health data to report. Gives you an idea here of what we've been dealing with for about the last month. On March 24th, the DeKalb County seven-day rolling average positivity rate was 2.9%. That wasn't quite at its lowest, but that's pretty close to where it was at its lowest. So we were kind of rolling along. Things were really pretty good. By April 12th, that seven-day positivity rate peaked at 7.4%. It went down a couple of days, 6.9, 6.8, went back up to 7.1, 7.2. We are gradually going down. I'll show a graph that I have in just a second. By April 23rd, this is as of this morning. So this is the most recent data for the seven-day rolling average. We're down to 5.9%. And those numbers are single digits. But if you do some quick math, it almost tripled from March 12th to March 24th to April 12th. And we're still at double where we were a month ago as of April 23rd. So we've seen it, an increase, although we are starting to see a decrease in the region, in the county, and in our city. Unfortunately, the largest population that's been impacted the most are individuals under 20. It's RU. So we're seeing that at elementary, middle school, high school level, as well as students who are out of high school and in college. This is our district dashboard that was updated today. So the number of staff currently positive is at one. The number of students currently positive is 29. And most importantly, you can see the students who are currently quarantined due to close contact, it is at 343. Number of students currently quarantined is 460. These are updated just this afternoon. In fact, maybe I talked about it before I left the office. So you can see, it's a large number. For every one of these cases, it's a team of health staff within the district. Cory's involved in all of them, health aides, health assistants, other school nurses get involved, Mr. Ryan gets involved. I will say that literally Cory has a tape measureer and goes into classrooms and measures six feet, how far apart the seats are, desks are. She doesn't measure for three, she has to measure for six, because that's the definition of the close contact. Just gives you an idea of the number of cases, as well as just kind of the workload to get these decisions made and work through the process. So what does that mean? We're averaging about 90 positive cases each week. Every positive case on average results in about 10 close contacts who are then quarantined. About 90 close contacts who are quarantined every week over the last couple of weeks. We have had some outliers. In specific, there was one case where one positive individual resulted in quarantining about 90 students. But for the most part, we've been able to keep that number pretty low. One thing to keep in perspective, we've got approximately 2,500 students who are learning in person Monday through Thursday every week. The vast majority of our students are coming to school every day, Monday through Thursday, still, even though we know we've had some positive cases, even though we've had to implement some quarantines. So I will tell you personally, as the number of quarantines has risen, it's been hard to take, because that means students are out of school. My students have not had to be quarantined. So I know parents whose students have had to be quarantined are extremely frustrated from time to time. Many parents understand, they appreciate the phone call, they appreciate the contact, they appreciate the explanation, the follow-up. But there are a lot that are frustrated as well, and I completely understand that. One thing I think we all need to keep in mind is that when that social distancing guideline from six to three feet, we've got individuals who are in closer contact than they used to be. We also have more individuals in all of our buildings. Just have more students, we have more bodies. One of my colleagues, my superintendent colleague, put it this way. This is kind of the cost of doing business in schools right now. You have more people, you have more opportunity for transmission. In many cases, we're still not seeing any transmitted in schools, although we are starting to see some connections, coincidences, nothing definite. But in most cases, we're still seeing it transmitted outside of school. I would expect some degree of quarantines for the remainder of the school year. And if you just look at those numbers, I think we're probably looking at about 90 to 100 students. But I think that's what we need to brace ourselves for, about 90 to 100 students. And as time goes on and we get to the end, some students will roll off of quarantine, then they'll come back. Unfortunately, other students are going to roll on that and have to be out for some period of time. Every situation is unique. And I think it's very legitimate to feel like outside of the school environment, that you've got a positive case, there's these close contacts, you just make the decision to go. And it's not. There's just a lot of follow-up that has to happen, and in every case, you'd be... I'd love to see that number go down as we get closer to the end of the school year, but I think that's what we need to brace for. We'll continue to do our best to work through those in a timely fashion, get communication out, and hope that that number goes down. We'll see. Are these quarantined numbers, are they coming from any one school or schools? I mean, is there, or it's just random across the whole district? It's spread across the district, but right before the end of the day, I think, maybe we were talking before about the distribution.
Yeah, I would say in terms of overall quarantines, it's high school, middle school, based on the schedule. So at an elementary school, if I'm sitting in the middle of a class, there's potentially 10, nine, 10 students that could be impacted. And that's probably about it. In fact, during recess, maybe there's a few more. But at high school, it's that kind of seven classes, or six classes, or whatever it is. So just based on the schedule and switching classes, it's going to be more at those levels. In most of those cases, it hasn't been, but the 21 or 22 that we were really expecting, I'm going to spend less than that, but it's going to be more than elementary.
One of the things that's been really helpful, and I'll come right back to you. One of the things that's been really helpful is that teachers are doing an excellent job, keeping seating charts, keeping track of students where they're at during the day. After the period, recess, there are times when students mix a little bit. But during class time, teachers have been unbelievably helpful, because they have seating charts and they know where students are supposed to be. We do follow up, so if we quarantine a student, and there's some conversation, and we thought they were in school that day, they were absent, for example. You will go back, and Cory has gone back and cleared students. It doesn't happen a ton. And I talked a little bit about this at the last meeting, but we feel like that the quarantine decisions are really accurate because of the help that we've gotten from the staff. So that's been really critical.
I was just going to say, with that, you know, number rising, kind of holding at 90 or 100 a week right now, which is a significant number, are we also seeing families that are opting back to remote learning at an increasing rate because of that?
Yes, and for a couple of different reasons. I think some families have made that decision, just because maybe they're a little bit gun shy. Maybe they were willing to give face-to-face. There were a lot of families that contacted the institute, that they've been remote all year, but they really wanted to give their student an opportunity to come to school before the year was over. Maybe some of those families have decided to move their students back to remote. We're seeing a large number of high school and middle school, primarily the high school students, as they look to events here at the end of the school year, whether it's participating in activities, graduation, obviously, it's a huge milestone. Nobody wants to miss that. And in almost every case, students who are quarantined are quarantined to no fault of their own. Right? So they come to school, you know, they've done their best, they're wearing their masks, they're washing their hands, they're doing everything they need to do outside of school, and an individual in school becomes positive. Oftentimes, they're no fault of their own. So in a lot of cases, you know, you're missing time in the classroom, which is important. But we've seen a jump in the number of high school students, I think particularly because they don't want to miss those events. We did have some students that had any senior night events. That's horrible, and we hate to see that happen, but we have to make that decision. So we've seen that happen. We've been flexible with those students, you know, this year, trying to accommodate them, because we recognize that those are important events. But that's on our mind for next year. So how can we do with that better versus guidance going to change, you know, over the summer as community levels rise, whether it's vaccination or natural immunity? So we'll continue to watch that, but we have seen it rise in the number of students who've chosen to go off. Any other questions? I'm not quite done, but any other questions, we'll kind of direct them.
Are schools being diligent about mask wearing? I've had a few questions about that, where people, I think there's a perception that maybe that's a big issue.
It's a really good question, and I don't get out nearly as much as I would like. However, I will tell you, every time I'm out in school, we see students with masks on. There are incentivizing stations around all the schools. I think students are doing a really good job. You know, we were fearful of that, especially younger students. And that's not to say that there's not trouble with, you know, some age levels and maybe some classrooms, but by and large, if you're out in schools, you see kids wearing their masks appropriately, too. So not, you know, below the nose or whatever, you see them wearing their masks appropriately during school. Doing a really good job of that.
And I just have one other question. I appreciate that you're trying to improve the communication. I also appreciate the number of communications you need to make. Are you working toward, it seems to me that parents are really having a hard time with me and Nicole every day that their kids are quarantined. Are we working on improving that so that they call once and realize, am I telling, it's going to be out for the next 10 days or whatever it is? And be done with that phone call?
But we don't want to be repetitive, so, and that's a new issue. I have heard that that's happened a whole heck of a lot, but that doesn't mean it's not, obviously. So we'll go back and make sure that we're just sending calls out if needed.
Yeah, they actually think it's more, they feel like they need to call to say their student's not going to be in school, is going to be absent, because they've been quarantined? I mean, that's at least how I understand it, and they're like, why do I have to call every day for that?
So not necessarily the COVID notification, but recording attendance?
Right.
Yeah. I'll often make sure that we're trying to make that seamless as we can to parents.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
I've got two things, Stephen, if that makes sense for later in your presentation. Feel free to deflect. For the district dashboard, did have a question from a parent. It seemed, we started off the year showing trends. It looks like right now, you can only see the stats for right now. Is that intentional by design? Is there an intent to go back to show more data so we can see how things have changed since we went to four-person?
Yeah, so when we transitioned from the previous website to the current website, somehow, correct me if I'm wrong, because David is the kind of maneuver on the dashboard. When we transitioned and moved it from one site to another, we lost some of the functionality for whatever reason. So we are working, we try to get that other information back up there. But we really wanted to get kind of the basic information first and try to add as we can. We're still having some issues with that, but it is something that we're still working on. I believe it's a Google dashboard. So from Google, you would think it'd be pretty consistent, but for whatever reason, we've had some challenges. So we are working towards that, but we're not there yet.
And the second is, if we're anticipating that this could be an issue post your graduation, is there something else that we can be doing to try and build ourselves a gap between the end of learning and that graduation ceremony, such that students don't have to, let's say, sacrifice their end of year learning, or potentially, you know, hurt their end of year learning by changing instructional methods right then, but still build in some sort of window where we can ensure that everyone's got a chance to clear themselves for the necessary time before we hold a graduation ceremony?
There is a break between seniors' last day and graduation. And I want to say, you probably know this better than I do, probably not, but why, two weeks? It's probably about 10 days.
I think it's Thursday till Sunday.
Oh, so that's, okay, so I call it that. We have not discussed that, but that doesn't matter. We talked to Mr. Carlson, the high school team, about that.
And I know they've started to look at dates, or have already reserved a date at the connotation center and everything, but I guess I would like to know if there's a better recommendation that the administration would have as far as trying to time that end of year stuff, so that we can at least help the students have the best chance of success without saying, well, if you really want to guarantee you're going to be there, you're going to stay home for the next two weeks and try and finish up your senior year, your mentor.
I don't know, we may be limited in moving graduations out and in grabbing a class, but certainly worth the conversation. I don't know, we may be limited in moving graduations out and in grabbing a class, but it's certainly worth the conversation. Any other questions before I keep moving? Just wanna report some data, some of this is a little different than you've seen in the past. So from the county level, test positivity is moderate, we're still under about eight percent. But the number of youth cases per one hundred thousand residents and the number of cases reported for youth have rolled up and pulled in that substantial range, that's something that the health department is watching very closely. There has been some question about whether or not, if we reach, you know, those previous thresholds, let's say, eight percent of test positivity, there's been some question about whether or not we'll be required to take pause, move back into a higher tier of mitigation or lower, however you look at that. It's kind of been clear right now because circumstances have changed. And people are being vaccinated now, people have built up a natural immunity. So we've asked that question in the health department, they're having those conversations with IDPH. So I just wanna be really clear that if we hit eight percent, for example, that does not necessarily mean we're automatically going to have to shut schools down or go remote. That's really still, I think, will primarily be a local decision. It will come in the form of a recommendation from the health department. But really, at this point, my, my goal is to keep schools open to the end of the school year unless we started to see a spike like we saw back in the fall and over the winter. Here's a thirty-day trend in region one. They don't, IDPH does not provide these, these trends for individual counties. Best you can get is region, but I can tell you that our county data reflects very closely this, this region one data. So you can see we kicked there about a week ago, we're starting to come down now. That's, I would say that's accurate both in the region, in the county, and in zip code data for both Sycamore and Portland. Took a look at that this morning. So just some final thoughts on, on quarantining. We want, we want students to be in school as much as possible, just as much as everybody else does. Quarantining is only kind of unnecessary. We continue to ask our entire community to follow the IDPH and the health department guidelines to keep each other safe, open sign out outside of school. The words done outside of school will help us keep our doors open inside of school. We also continue to rely on the cooperation of our parents and students as well as the greater community. So just working together. We know there's frustration, but we ask the parents and families and the community to work with us. Sometimes we need to ask for patience because the workload can get pretty heavy. Other times, we know parents do not wanna get that call. I overheard somebody say that getting a call from the school nurses is like getting a call from the Grim Reaper. And I know that that was a joke, our health staff is great, they're doing a phenomenal job, but we know that that call is not always welcome. We understand that, but we have important information to share. If you can, just kind of bear with us, work with us, do our best to get information out, answer questions, and roll in this together. And when you're seeing symptoms in your students at home, please report those. When other household members have symptoms, please report those, those to go to a physician and then, you know, examined and there have been a couple of cases where there was a known positive case in a household, but students were still sent to school. Doesn't happen very often, but it's happening. So examples like that, we're just asking everybody to continue working with, help us out. And we know that those families, that they want kids to be in school, but there's an impact on other students when that happens. So just, just one example, help us out, let's work together and get through these last five or six weeks of school year. So with that, I'm gonna switch gears a little bit and talk about planning for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I will present a final plan in May. The work has been a little bit more complicated than we thought it was going to be, but it's in progress. So I've met with the subcommittee of the administrative team a couple of times recently. We're working through those things. We also had a joint meeting with SGA leadership last week. So I really feel like, and I hope Andrew and Jim will nod when I say this, really feel like we're both on the same page and moving in the, in the same direction. So I will present a final plan in May. I'm gonna skip to the bottom bullet and just say that June fourth is the deadline that we've identified, identified for any student who's gonna be remote next year. That's the deadline for them to present us with the documentation from a physician or a healthcare, a licensed healthcare professional, that that student needs to be out either because they are at risk of severe illness or a member of their household. So there's still some time, so hopefully, parents hear that date, they knew they've got some time to get that done. All students will be identified as in person for next year unless they or a member of their household is at risk of severe illness. We're developing a form for a licensed healthcare professional to complete and send that back to us, primarily so there's just consistency. You know, we, we respect that doctors' offices have forms and we're gonna develop a school district form so they all look the same, we're gonna make it very easy for the healthcare professional. What's the, the marking that they have to be, out of school and be remote, signed a, we're gonna make it as smooth as we can. But we really feel like having our own form that we provide and we'll be able to download it off the website and get it, and make it a lot easier for everybody. Now, building level teams are finalizing plans to support short-term, long-term remote learners. So K-15, 618, 912. And, you know, really initially, the thought process was, how are we gonna support long-term remote students? Those students who are gonna be out for the year or a semester, how do we provide instruction for them? We're gonna do that with Sycamore teachers as much as possible. We, we still want our students to be taught by our staff. But we anticipate that there will be some times when that's not gonna be able to happen. So we anticipate probably hiring some additional elementary staff who will work with remote-only sections for students. At the high school, no school level, we do anticipate using some, some software or virtual programs like Illinois Virtual School. There's a link to the IDS website. It's different than what we've used in the past, but they are certified, licensed, endorsed Illinois teachers through the State Board of Education, so we know that the courses are accredited. There's a teacher for every class, so when a student signs up for that class, there's somebody to face with. Ongoing, so students don't just sign up and they're on their own. They sign up and then a teacher guides them through that class and is available for, for element, sometimes instruction as well. So those kinds of opportunities will be used as needed when we can't work out in our schedule, our four to seven teachers teach them those courses. Again, the thought process was, how are we gonna support these remote learners long-term? One of the other things we've learned from the quarantine play is that we also have to make sure that we have an option for students who are out for fourteen days, whatever that quarantine is gonna be. At the elementary level, how are students gonna move out, you know, to, to remote on a short-term basis and then move back into school? How do we make sure that they don't miss anything? So we're working through that process. The high school, middle school level, the same thing will apply, but if a student, it needs to be out short-term remotely, they can't really go in to sign up for an IDS class that's a semester-long class. So that's, that's posing some challenges as well, but I know that the, the middle school and the high school team are working through those. I've asked those teams to work through that and make some recommendations. We need to have some flexibility, so if things change over the summer, we can react to that. But we will have at least, we will have a viable option before the end of the school year that we can communicate to parents so they know what that's gonna look like before summer start. One of the other things we're looking at is starting dismissal times at all three levels, K-5, 618, and 912. Currently, we have staggered starting dismissal times, so elementary starts last and is dismissed last. High school, middle school start earlier, and then they are dismissed earlier. But if you're familiar with research, particularly for adolescent students and older, you know that, and as a parent of a couple of teenagers, it's hard to accept, but it's the truth. They benefit academically from starting school later. So they, they fight for a variety of reasons, that it's harder for them to go to sleep at night. So in order to get the hours of sleep that they need, they need to sleep a little bit longer and therefore to start school a little bit later. That's the recommendation from organizations like the American Academy of Nutrition. So we've looked at that research, we talked about that at the joint meeting with SGA leadership, and we've got some, some additional articles and research from them. That makes a lot of sense, but it also creates some other challenges to overcome. So one of those is childcare. So if an older student is responsible for supervising a younger student, whether it's at the beginning of the day or the end of the day, how do they make that happen? Now, it will help because we're planning for a full return for Oscar, so that's gonna be available for childcare, and then we'll go back to the full version of Oscar, so not limited in terms of number. The childcare is one issue. The other issue is activities. So students who are involved in activities at the high school and the middle school level, they are typically leaving at the end of the day to get out of bus and go compete or perform. So if they're leaving early and we're starting school later, they're potentially missing more instructional time. So when you have this conversation, the immediate reaction is, well, you know, there's a challenge and it's gonna impact activities, so we're not gonna mess with it. Well, that's not the case. My concern is that because students are involved in activities, which is something we want them to be involved in, they are going to miss some instructional time. So how can we minimize that if we're gonna flip-flop high school, middle school and have, have them start later and elementary students start earlier? So we are continuing to look at that, there's some challenges, we're working through that, but that's one of the other things that we'll finalize before the end of the school year is the parents' involvement, and then plan for that next fall. I mentioned Oscar, we're planning for a full return for Oscar in the, in the fall. It will be a little expanded over the summer, but not quite back to a full summer Oscar program. And then June fourth, again, I mentioned was the deadline for remote learner documentation here. That will change the decision.
So other than tonight's board meeting, would that date and that form that's being developed pushed out sooner? Because if we end up not announcing this until the second board meeting in May, they have like a week to get to a doctor's appointment. I'm not sure if they can get a doctor's appointment scheduled for those people. So are we planning to at least push that piece out sooner so that they can at least make arrangements if that's something they wanna consider?
Yeah, so if they, if they know that there is a situation or diagnosis that's gonna keep a student out, we don't want them to wait. We'll get the form out early, get as, as fast as we can, we can go through a couple of lenses to make sure it's better than it needs. But as soon as that's out, parents can start. And if they get that and a physician or a healthcare professional signs off on it, they don't have to turn it in right away. So if you're kind of on the fence, you know, you know, there is a risk, but still could go to school, strongly urge parents, contact your physician, your healthcare provider, get the form filled out, get it signed, and then hold on to it until you're ready to submit. But yeah, they won't have to wait until the full presentation in May. I don't anticipate this changing at all, pretty solid. So we'll get the form posted, they can download it, they can get it filled out and turn it in or hold on to it.
Let them know it's there.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they won't just be waiting for it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Given how much things have changed this year and, and if people opt to be remote, will they be held up doing that for the entire school year? Or come February twenty twenty-two, they go, oh, can we get in now?
So there's gonna have to be a point at which we can let students come back if, if the healthcare situation is, has changed. Maybe the household member has moved out or moved to a living room or something like that. So we do wanna allow for that. My, we've not made a decision on this either, it could be quarters, it could be semesters. It may end up being a longer term, you know, semesters, just because everybody has some time to really mold us over and make a decision, and because I think we're moving in a, in a better direction. And we're not out of the woods yet, let me, let me say that again, we're not, we're not out of the woods yet. But I would anticipate that it's gonna be a longer period of time, so it's maybe a semester as opposed to ninety. It won't necessarily be the full school.
Steve, in regards to the start dismissal times, it's been a big talker from, I'm sure, K through twelve and every parent in between. Can I just ask that, when that's solidified at the next meeting, can we dive deep into why we can't go back to the normal start time? It's a counter, it's a, it's, that's, I think if you don't have a child that rides the bus and you've never experienced that, you have no idea how the bus, busing works at the schools, so it just, if we could put that out there, just let somebody, you know, you'd be able to direct somebody to a resource to say, look, this is why start times have to change. It just seems like that's a, it's a blind spot for a lot of parents that don't deal with it. So regardless of the decision, which way it's going, and what start time, start and stop time is of being, just being able to fully explain, this is why we can't go back to how it was, or this is what we would need to be able to, to, to return to that. Because I think a lot of fear is, is that, well, gee, we're at three feet social distance right now. Is this like this forever? And I've now gotta figure out a lot of stuff balancing a schedule, you talk about childcare, all that other stuff. So I know it's, it's been a topic of conversation. So just a, a great detail of explanation, and that when we hit that part, and then we'll be very good at finalizing.
Yeah, absolutely, we can dive into that in a little bit, yeah.
So is there, I know no guidance has been released yet on what vaccines and children, where, what the direction that's gonna go, how rapidly it's gonna be available, when do people even do it? But assuming that at some point our guidance from the CDC and IDPH changes, where there is a major benefit from an educational continuity standpoint to being vaccinated, i.e. you can't be sent home and quarantined, blah, blah, blah. Is, have we thought about how we would collect that information on a voluntary basis? And how we might legally be able to integrate that into classroom assignments, seating patterns, and things like that, such that now, you know, because in the ideal world, if we knew everything, right? We'd have a non-vaccinated student next to a vaccinated student next to a non-vaccinated, so the two non-vaccinated have their six feet of social distance, so if one's sick, it doesn't knock out, you know, the whole classroom. If they're way, we're gonna be able to collect and incorporate that information or is that just a, a non-starter because of all the, all the legal issues?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna break that into two, really good question. You know, first of all, we're already used to collecting immunization data. So whether or not we collect COVID vaccination data, it's still a different ballgame. I, I do wanna back up just a little bit and reiterate. I don't anticipate COVID vaccinations being required for anybody for next year, students or staff. So if we can collect that, what does that look like? Because it's gotta be voluntary only, but we do have a mechanism to collect that, so that's helpful. And our student database collects that information, so it's easy to input that and then have it reported. To go to your second question, you know, from kind of a logistics standpoint, makes a lot of sense. From a practicality standpoint, and the changes in enrollment and classes and mobility, I just don't know that it's ever gonna be possible to try to arrange classes like that. And then you start adding quarantine and short-term remote, and then at some point, long-term remote gets to come back with a semester or whatever. And how many vaccinated and non-vaccinated, and how many are telling us and not? So I think there's so many variables that impact that, I don't know that we'll ever be able to do that in terms of classroom, you know, seating assignments and things like that, but collecting that information will certainly have. So at some point in the future, if that's beneficial in helping us in any way, shape, or form, we've got the means to do that, run those reports pretty quickly at classroom level, building level, district level, so that we can, we can use it if we want to.
But it will be a voluntary disclosure as a part of the student, or the student parents?
I would guess so, at this point, but I think that's unclear from a legal standpoint right now. What we can, so I mean, it's distinguished between staff and students, you know, because, you know, they're, they're two different groups. So what we're able to ask for from staff is, is a little bit more limited because a lot of that's personal and their employees. In terms of students, some of that stuff we can ask for, but this, you know, the COVID vaccination is still rolling out. So from a legal standpoint, we still need some clarity from council in terms of what we can ask for, what we can't. School is compulsory, and we have an obligation to keep students and staff safe. So I would say we've got a little bit more leverage there, but I haven't heard anything inclusive from, from our council here.
I would just imagine that if it's not mandatory, then it's gonna be voluntary as to whether or not they're gonna share that information. And then your, your plan is only as good as the information that you receive this year.
Yeah, so, yeah, and to go back to Eric's point, if the information's not completely accurate, it makes it really hard to use it in any way, shape, or form. You know, there's, there's still talk about these vaccination passports and what people are gonna have to present or be able to present. So I think as time goes on and you learn more, I think some of that stuff will become more clear. But I don't, you know, I just haven't heard anything up to this point. I would hope to get some guidance over the summer, at the very least. I would hope to get some guidance over the summer at the very least, but I think that also depends on when the vaccinations are approved for 12 and older and then the next group, when they're available. So still a lot of holes in the air there. This is my last slide in return to learn updates, so I'm going to pause one more time. Any other questions about anything I talked about tonight? On the next one.
Assistant Supreme, head of the conference.
I just have something quick for you to say. I thought this one way, but it didn't. The Old Mill Park, Ktab that we were involved in for a number of years. Tonight, I brought to your reservation to the Council from the University of New York Second Lab with Ryan Granger. And so he's been working with this council and then I'm going to represent him on his reservation that I brought to you. And so he's been there for a few months, but he just needs a little time to ease this process, so it's going to happen.
So the good news is that he's keeping up with his work, I'm going to plug you in. Maybe it's dangerous for him. That's actually good. Well, is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing approval and execution of partial release of Jorge? That's proposed.
Same.
Thank you. Open discussion. Mr. President. Roll call.
Baby?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiber?
Yes.
Baby?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Open discussion, future agenda. We said goodbye to Jeff Jacobson, although we want to welcome Michael DeVito, so congratulations on your election to the board, and you've made it partway through your first meeting, so that's a good sign. You haven't left, you didn't walk out like Jeff.
I can answer to the esteemed basis.
But welcome, and we're glad you're here, and I know we'll be working with you to help make this process a little bit more transparent and to make it a little bit more easy for you to come on board and function. And it is a learning process, it will take you some time to kind of get in the hang, but please feel free to ask questions. Here, especially at a meeting, we use acronyms a lot, we talk about programs that have already been instituted that you might not have some background in, so really do not, not be afraid to ask about those kind of things. And I apologize if we start throwing that information and acronyms around without properly explaining that to you, so really don't feel embarrassed about asking questions, it's a welcome thing, so we're willing to answer those questions as they come up, even if it's in the middle of the order.
Perfect. Well, I feel very welcome and I'm very excited to be a part of this board and hopefully bring some meaningful contributions in this district, so thank you guys for your warm up.
You're welcome. Any other items for open discussion or observation, questions, future agenda items? Is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment or dismissal of personnel negotiations and unit delegation? Second, roll call.
James Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiber?
Yes.
Baby?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
One thing I forgot to mention earlier would be that if any of you who already have committee assignments would like to maybe change some of those assignments, send me an email and let me know. Michael, you can let me know if you're interested in a slide. And Kent, you can send out a list of what the committees are, so that everybody knows.
One thing I do want to add real quick, just about meeting location, they're going to start work on the middle school this summer in June, so we'll need to move to an alternate location for the June and July meetings. I would recommend having the high school for the North Grove Library, so if you have a preference, let me know. I talked about Ryan Janisch and Tim Carlson today, either of those would be easy to get into this summer. So we'll need to do that just for those dates in June and July, and then we should be able to come back in a year or two.
Is there, I mean, is there a preference for technology and would it be easier at the auditorium than it would be in the...
Yeah, there's no projector in the cafeteria. Or the library.
So the auditorium at the high school would be better?
Yeah.
I mean, that's...
Do you want it stayed in auditorium or do you want the library?
Oh, at the high school.
The high school, yeah.
Either assign the GoTime projectors.
Libraries are more...
A little more intimate.
And more just, not so separate.
Well, we'll shoot for high school library for June and July then.
Okay.
I just want to say the July meeting is my birthday, so...
All's fine. Yeah, so you have to... We're talking about... Thanks for volunteering.
Yeah, my 20th birthday, we're going to...
You got to bring special treats.
I'm sure.
Lots of sugar, yeah. Who says you'll have fun on the school, boy? All right, anything else before we take a motion to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I will motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? You stand adjourned? Thank you.
Puzzled. Hold on.